...time citizens to be heard. Okay, yes, we do have three citizens wishing to be heard tonight and Okay, yes, we do have three citizens wishing to be heard tonight and the first one is Mr. John Robinson. Mr. Robinson, if you'll come up and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm John Robinson, New Jersey. I'm here tonight to talk about a project that we had on board called Tribute out in Cuyahoga. It's been on the docket for at least eleven and a half years and we've been trying to get water and sewer run to the property. And we understand that if we have a lot of potential developers looking to do the development right now. And the only hope back to that, we understand that water is going to be ran there. But the sewer is what's in question. And the sewer would have a tremendous effect going as far as price wise and cost. It would require a lift station to be $350,000 plus, then plus running the line. Then we're required to pay Williams School Road 500 feet of debt. We hope that you could extend a hand to help to get the sewer to the property. That's what we're coming for tonight. And if that's the case, that will resolve the issues and the development can move forward. And when the project first came up years ago, it was turned down and it was tabled for one year instead of six months. And during that time, there was money, funds that was allocated for each unit that was going to be built for $5,000 per lot. And by our project being delayed for a year, the money was absorbed and then it shifted burden of the costs that we got to provide water and sewer. So that being said, it was seeming to be kind of unfair to put in a system that we only operate by the county. It's been operated by the county. And it's less attractive to investors when they come forward to invest into the properties. So we have a potential investor right now that's looking to move forward. They're looking to move forward immediately. They're working very diligently, working very hard. USD is working with them and they're trying to get everything off the ground. And we come tonight to see if you could please consider running the sewer out there to the property to make some progress in the project we made.
Where is the property?
It's Cuyahoga.
Property?
Yes, William School Road and Johnson Road, between William School and Johnson Road. Alright, thanks.
Mr. Robinson, if you'll hang out a few minutes after the meeting. Obviously can't resolve the issue tonight, but Commissioner Wadzak Baker and I will get with you after the meeting if you got time.
I have to take.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Citizen is Charles Judge.
Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
If you will, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Charles Robert Judge. I live at 1739 D Poplar Street in Remerton, Georgia. 31601. What I want to bring forth is something that, uh, that needs to be addressed. And I don't want to have any backlash from it, but here's, here's the thing. There's crime being covered up in this county. And I was assaulted by my employer. He's John Corbett, our local Georgia Assembly person's brother that owns the boardwalk. I got his transcript, I got his arrest, got a warrant for his arrest. I had to go get a criminal warrant. Unlike most people, if somebody assaults you, they put their person in jail. No, I had to go get a criminal warrant and I managed to do that. And then Ashley Park shut it down when he said.
If you don't, if you don't mind, can you, can you refrain from naming people until we can talk afterwards?
Okay, I will.
If it's okay for you, I prefer.
Yeah, I'm trying to be appropriate and I don't, I didn't even want to, uh, I don't want to be in this position, but I am. And I was hurt really bad by this guy. And, uh, it took me two years of recovery and I'm still in recovery. He hit so hard it busted my eardrum. Now, I didn't just stand there and take it. I think he thought I was going to fall down and went because he's done this to people before. Five other that came out and it's a transcript I'm going to leave with you guys. And, uh, when I didn't stand there, I hit him back. He tried to get a gun and I made sure that he did not get that gun by kicking him several times and yelled for the police until the police did get there. Our former chief of the police gave me, and he read these transcripts and read the transcripts of the other people who saw what happened. He got me what I needed to get the man arrested and then he retired. And I don't know if that anything to do with me or not, probably didn't. But your mind goes to wondering, like I said, I went to, uh, went to a lawyer, a couple of them, talked to them. And they gave me, I thought they were friends of mine, so you don't want me to name names. But, uh, I talked to both of them and the two lived next door to each other. And one said, well, you know, the other one's my next door neighbor. He's going to be busy. Why don't you see this other friend of mine? I know he'd do you right. This has been since 2016. I haven't seen any justice, any courtroom. This man's rich. He could, if, if I was lying and he was telling the truth, he could done resolve this and had me in court. But I'm not lying, I'm telling the truth. He assaulted me for no reason and he pulled a Jesse Smollett. He tried to use the N-word as a something to, uh, derail the case or, you know, chase this rabbit over here, red herring, as I call it. And it wasn't even that factor in there. He, he, he made this all up from my old cloth. And, uh, you would just have to see the transcript. I got the whole file if you would like to have it out in my car. But his transcript, even once you read that, you can't do nothing but laugh and say, I can't believe we gave this guy's money. The city has already cut off all ties with him as far as I know with giving money for projects. And, uh, one more thing that happened Saturday night, there was a police chase that went down my street, Poplar Street. Looked like it was doing over 100 miles an hour and then ended with a crash on Melody Lane. And I believe, I don't know how anybody survived. And Georgia State Patrol was out there investigating and measuring, had it blocked off the next day. And it, the way it looked like somebody had been killed, probably two, two people at least. And it was nasty, it was ugly. And we hadn't seen nothing, anything about the news or anything. And there may be reasons it's kept quiet, you know, if they're investigating. But people don't need to keep becoming in Poplar Street at 100 miles an hour unless, you know, unless it's a terrorist attack or something. They have a reason to be chasing at that speed. There was no call for that. And I'm all on the cop side. I want to see criminals get caught. I want to see them put in jail unless they're, uh, but it's unfair when you have a group of criminals who get caught and don't go to jail. And the other group of criminals who don't have so much money, see these other ones get away with the same stuff they're going to jail for. Brings attention. And I guess my time's out. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. And I'd love to meet with any of the activists.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Okay, our next citizen and last citizen to be heard is George Boston Ryan. Good evening, Mr. Ryan.
Greetings. My name is George Boston Ryan, 5004 Oak Drive, Al Doster, Georgia. 31605-1144. Following the death of Kendrick Johnson, I was placed on a nine-year bogus unlawful criminal trespass. And I have proof. But nobody in Lawrence County will acknowledge putting me under it. No judge, and I've been through everybody. Two sheriff deputies stated when they put me under it at different occasions, that was done by school superintendent Wes Taylor. We have audio wherein Wes Taylor said he didn't do it. And he said, I need to check with the sheriff. And he making, put more light on the circle because he think he had something on me. Had I not had my tape recorder, they could have denied it ever even happened. But thank God that I had my tape recorder and I have that on me. I'm not here to bind nobody because I'm a positive person. I think it happened because God had a work he wanted to do through me. I sent two letters to the superintendent and the attorney of the county. That I be removed in writing, on this, you know, legal, bogus, perhaps racist criminal trespass. As I said, in nine years, it has been all the way up to not in the court system. Cause I like resolving peacefully. Eric Hole and Barack Obama is aware of it. And Lawrence County with this case have also been to the Justice Department in Atlanta, cause I do my homework. And I'm here tonight, I know you all can't resolve it, but this is an official notice to you as elected officials. I sent the county attorney a letter stating that in 15 days, I may be considering legal action. And it is serious. I received, on the 28th of May, I sent my letter to West Taylor and the attorney. And I got a letter back on June the 9th from the attorney. And he sent me a letter with 27 words and two sentences. Didn't say a word about any of the things that I mentioned in my letter. I even sent him a video. I'm going to get you all email address off the web. And I will be sending you all a copy of the video, of the proof of what happened to me. And I just want to say to you tonight as I close, I want to thank you all for serving the people of the community. And I didn't come here tonight for a response from you all. I'm not here for that. But I come because I believe in doing what is right. I'm a retired military veteran. There was no reason to put me unless they thought I would report something that the news media wouldn't report about the death of Kendrick. If those children came to me. And my slogan is that I report what others ignore. I have two, two million views around the world, all overseas. And I'm going to pursue this because it's been a long time. People think that it's over. I don't give up. My name, my last name does not give up. My last name is Ryan. And I believe in Matthew 2435. Heaven and earth will pass away, but my word going to stand forever. So I stand on the truth because I didn't molest no children, didn't destroy no property. All I did was report the news. But Wes Taylor put me under criminal trespass according to the two deputies. Don't y'all call me a liar. Call the deputy's liar. And the sheriff said he going to get back, not Sheriff Hall, not the sheriff. And he never did. Y'all have a nice evening. God is still in control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Come to you with thanksgiving in our heart, Lord, for all of our many blessings, Lord. The things that sometimes we take for granted. Lord, we want to focus on those things this evening and, and think about those, um, those times that, that we do overlook. People and places and events and things that we know are only blessings that come from you, Lord. Um, tonight, I also want to thank you and give praise to you for our law enforcement community, Lord, and the service that they're providing. Um, first responders, our ambulance drivers, our paramedics, the EMTs. Lord, those folks that are out there in the heat, day in and day out, just to serve us as citizens of this fine county. Lord, and tonight also especially thankful for our animal control officers. Lord, we're blessed with a, an animal community here and a community of folks who, um, who see the, um, the benefit in, in our pets. And the family and the, the joy they bring to our lives, Lord. And those folks out there who take care of them and run our animal shelter, Lord, tonight, we are especially thankful for them. Lord, we ask you to, to continue to bless them and to watch over them and guide them. And Lord, um, we ask all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Commissioners, um, our first order of business tonight is, um, regarding, um, our animal control officers. And as you can see, we have, um, I think all of them are here this evening. And, um, I think Ms. Dukes is going to lead us in a special representation. Um, so we'll follow your lead and when you're ready for us to go down, we'll be happy to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Orinstein. Um, I would like to recognize our animal services director, Ms. Lily Petalski, Sergeant Mike Brown, um, and Sergeant Brown's team. Uh, they have, um, come a long way in a very short amount of time. Some of you may remember that several years ago, we had tremendous complaints related to animal services and how our cases were being handled in the field. And we brought Sergeant Brown on, on, on the team and along with Officer Sharp. Past history, he is our, our longest standing animal services officer for, for many years. And his leadership along with excellent team that was hired under. Um, they have turned around not only the quality of service that we provide, but also the respect for the service in the community, which is just as important. And through that, they've managed ordinance changes and, and a lot of things. Um, but what they did not have was an official certification. And that's not something that's easy to get. There's not a lot of training and certifications for animal services officers available. Um, but they researched, picked out a, a national training and I'll let Sergeant Brown explain to you inherently, um, what was involved in that. But it is significant and we wanted to make sure not only that you knew, but that in the public setting, we recognize their dedication, not only what they do every day, but, but also their willingness to go to extra mile from a certification standpoint. So Sergeant Brown, would you like to bring your team up? Mike, if you'd like to start, just explain to them a little bit about certification.
Alright, um, NACCA is a National Association of Animal Control throughout the United States. It's recognized. It provides, uh, training to, uh, give you the basic, uh, training for animal control officers. There's, uh, ACO 1 and ACO 2, um, and we completed it within a year. So it's a recognized, um, animal control certification. So if you go to any, um, animal control, California, New Jersey, those are one of the recommendations or requirements you must have, uh, to come along their animal control. And now our team have that same certification.
Fantastic. Um, Mike, if you'd like to introduce your place.
Alright, so I got Eric Short. Uh, he's been here the longest as usual. We have Officer Myrdell Cruz. She, uh, she has a good history too as well. She also was a animal control officer in Hawaii. And we have Jeffrey Atkinson, came from 911, came onto our team. He's been a great access to us.
Thank you.
And then we got Officer, uh, Matt Barney, um, former DPD officer. And he came along and joined our team. So I have some of the great group of officers who take pride in their job and work very hard for this community.
Thank y'all for what you did. Thank you for your leadership.
I do want to appreciate y'all for providing, uh, you know, resources for us to have this training to help our jobs. Uh, you know, um, private education and training that's needed to do our day to day jobs. So I do appreciate Paige Dukes and the Commissioner as well.
Where you going? So if y'all would like to line up, we have a small token appreciation window. If you want to come up and get in our photograph, you guys, y'all have to scoot over front and center. Mike, if y'all want to move over, say y'all are in the middle and then we'll get either side of the.
I've noticed several pictures of you kind of hiding inside.
Alright, one, two. Good, good, good. Thank you. Howdy y'all, good job. And Commissioners, if I could, before we move forward with the rest of the agenda while we have Sergeant Brown here. Um, I was made aware this afternoon of a call that Sergeant Brown was on. Um, he heard someone yelling for help. So he goes running over and there's a lady on the phone with 911. Her husband is laying in the driveway and he just shot himself in the leg above his knee. So while she's on the phone with 911, Sergeant Brown gets what he has in his truck out and he goes over, renders a pulse pressure safety assist EMS until they have a patient uploaded and out and they most likely save her life. So Mike, thank you. Not only for what you did.
Okay, we, um, I don't want to embarrass or put anyone on the spot, but I think we have, um, Chief Ruff here with us tonight, um, representing leadership council. If you would, Chief, let's give you a round of applause. We were blessed to have you in our community. Okay, so, um, Commissioners, um, next on the agenda is the minutes for approval. And if you remember, these were from the June 16th work session, regular session and the budget hearing meeting minutes. So I will entertain a motion to approve those unless there's any question. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor to approve the minutes? Signify by aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Okay, uh, Agenda Item 6A is an appointment to the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Ms. Dukes, were you going to address that for us?
Yes, sir, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. The seat is currently held by Mr. Randall Cruz. Although also Lawrence County Construction Board of Appeals will expire on June 30th of 2022. Mr. Cruz has expressed a desire to continue to serve.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dukes. Um, hearing he has a desire to be reappointed, I will, uh, submit his name for nomination. Is there any other nominations for this board? Good, that's always good, actually. Okay, so, um, we can, uh, we can approve him by, um,
Acclamation.
Acclamation. Okay, alright. Well, we'll move on to 7A for consideration. Um, the budget plan for the hotel motel proceeds for the fiscal year 2023. I believe that's Mr. Black.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, Member Georgia's statue, um, Board of Commissioners is required to adopt a budget plan for the use of hotel motel proceeds. And included with that is an approved plan by the Tourism Authority for the use of their proceeds as well. They did approve theirs at their meeting this morning, so this is ready to be adopted as part of your budget.
Commissioners, any questions regarding that?
I just have one, um, specific question regards, you know, these are peculiar times with the gas as well as post-corona. Have, did they have any type of forecast, I'd say for the next year or two? Cause I have been doing a lot of traveling with my son and I see the difference, uh, in this region. Did they have any kind of?
We, we've actually done, we do a forecast as part of our budget of what the hotel motel proceeds are going to be. We have budgeted those a little bit more conservatively than where they are actually coming in this year. But the distribution of those will be based solely on what actually comes in and not off of a, a budgeted amount. So this is just a plan based on that budgeted amount.
Basically, we're still rolling over what they had from before.
Yes, sir. And Commissioner Evans and I were actually in Tourism Authority meeting earlier today and that was part of the discussion. Um, because obviously Tourism Authority is planning the conference center and tourism's budget as well. And we are down a little from the, uh, last year. And so what they're seeing is that room rates are up, but there are less rooms being rented. And so that's not, not a residential situation compared to last year's number. So there is an expectation that that could continue to decline. Um, they did believe that the fuel numbers, to your good point, are having an impact on that as well. So it's something that's being watched very closely across the board.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I believe we approved and authorized the chairman to sign the intention, count the budget plan.
Okay, I have a motion, second.
Second.
Second from Stewart. All in favor, signify by aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Okay, um, 7B, the adoption of the fiscal year 2023 operating budget. Ms. Black?
Glad to have this here tonight. Um, yes, sir. Following your public hearing, um, on June 16th, you are, um, we have a budget recording tonight for your approval and adoption.
I'll ask, um, I said to the Commissioners at this point, don't have any questions regarding the budget. Any other questions from Ms. Black? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, you have a second.
Second.
Uh, second. All in favor, signify by aye. No opposition, so the motion carries. We have a fiscal year 2023 operating. Okay, 7D is the adoption. Okay, 7D is to adopt a resolution accepting water and sewer infrastructure for Kinderloos Forest. Oh, did I miss one? Yeah. Oh, did I? Did, I'm sorry. Excuse me, y'all. Yesterday, we heard from Judge Golden regarding this, the Governor's Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Accountability Court, DUI Court grant. Do we have anybody here to speak on that? No?
I can answer any questions if anyone might have.
If you don't have anything. Okay, if y'all think we're ready, I'll entertain a motion.
I do think a motion, but I'm just sitting on this from the specific to the bill, so I'll make a motion for it.
Okay, I have a motion, second. And a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Okay, now we'll go to 7D. This is regarding the water and sewer infrastructure in Indiana, Kinderloos Forest, for Phase 8A. Mr. McLeod?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is for Kinderloos Forest subdivision, which is located off the Highway 84 West. This is for infrastructure, for acceptance of infrastructure for water and sewer only. All the roads will remain private, and this is for Phase 8A. All the work has been completed, and all the paperwork has been turned in.
Okay, good. Any questions from Mr. McLeod? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Commissioner Watson-Baker, second.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Griner, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Okay, and then the next one is Kinderloos Forest as well, but this is for Phase 9. Chad?
Yes, sir. This again is for Kinderloos Forest subdivision. This is for water and sewer infrastructure acceptance for Phase 9, and all the work has been completed. The paperwork has been completed.
That's good. Any questions for Chad? Mr. McLeod? Not on, entertain a motion.
Motion to adopt.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the resolution for Kinderloos Phase 9. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, motion passes. Okay, next we have Agenda Item 7F, Transportation Investment Act, local project delivery application for the Clytonville Road widening.
Yes, sir. This is for approval for a local project delivery application for Old Clytonville Road widening, which is on the tiered constrained project list. We are estimated to start professional engineering in fall of 2022. This application will start the process for this to be a local delivered project.
Okay, and you said construction wouldn't start until 2024?
2024.
That's right. All right. Any questions for Chad regarding this? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Okay, Agenda Item 7G is the cybersecurity maturity continuation. Commissioner?
Good evening, Commissioners. As discussed yesterday, this is the next phase of the cybersecurity maturity that we did last year. This year, the focus will be a comprehensive cybersecurity preparedness.
Okay. All right, any questions?
I just have Paige, maybe you can answer. In regards to ABM, what type of assessment does this tie into what they're...
It doesn't. Their focus is based on efficiency, and this is based on risk. So there's two separate issues there.
Okay. Commissioners, if there are any other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Agenda Item number eight is a bid item for a new tractor for public works. Ms. Black?
Yes, sir. Thank you. We solicited bids for a new tractor for public works for Radaway Milling, to use by Northern Moonee for cleanup work on the Radaway. We received two bids at Weyman and Southern Tiverton, Georgia, for a Nazi purpose, and $49,750, and Southern Tractor in Bogalso for a Kubota, $50,000.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Black. Do we have any questions on this?
No, there was... What type of turnaround time did they give us for Mr. McLeod?
Both tractors, both bidders have installed.
But they had it as a... That's good.
So is there any further conversation about this? Okay. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, we award a bid to Southern Tractor, $50,000 due to local vendor preference.
Okay, I have a motion to award a bid to Southern Tractor for the Kubota. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? All in favor of Southern Tractor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Southern Tractor. Okay. All right, next is the County Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. Maister. I want to thank you all for your confidence and support in enduring the budget process. It is a huge relief for us to be able to take that off our list and see everything that we need to do over the next month to close out the current fiscal year and be ready with a shared budget that is adequate as well as physically reasonable for our next year. That doesn't happen overnight, in addition to all of the time that you all have spent and put in with that. We have a tremendous team led by Ms. Stephanie Black. I feel like some days co-led by Ms. Rachel Bowen with some of the staffing shortages that we've had in finance, and then also HR, Mr. Kenneth Fields is a tremendous part of that. So that great budget cannot continue without all of their hard work, and ladies, thank you. Kevin cannot be with us tonight. I'm going to let you all know that the county called for and held the required meeting relating to local option sales tax on Thursday. That date kicked off a 60-day window during which we would need to sell that out with the appropriate certificate to the State of Georgia. If not, then there is a process in the law that would move us into ADR, which is a form of mediation. And the conversations that we have had with the cities, we hope that that's not the case. We do not think that that will be the case. We will be working next week to prepare that certificate with the current percentages in place and forward that on to the City of Albasta. And then the percentages that go to the smaller cities are based off of the current census numbers and their population. So we'll keep you all posted as we move through that process. On Friday, we had a staff team that visited the Thomasville Animal Shelter and preparing to make forward with Lowndes County's new animal shelter, best management practices and some policies that have had a positive impact in other communities similar to Lowndes County. So we went over to take a look at those policies and how they operate their shelters. So there's some things that we're working on where that is concerned, with the ultimate goal to decrease our donation rates. And some of that is dependent upon how and how many animals actually come into your shelter. So we think that there is a shared responsibility there with citizens. Certainly, we want to make sure that we're meeting their needs, but there's also some folks out there that are just irresponsibly greedy animals, and then they get stuck with a litter of puppies or kittens, and they don't take care of them, and they turn them into the shelter. And that's happening over and over again, and that's part of our numbers. So we're going to work on some public education and policy related to that. This morning, again, during the meeting that Commissioner Evans and I had with the Tourism Authority, we discussed a feasibility study for a future phase of the conference center. Some of you are aware that the current conference center is unable to attract some larger events simply because there's not a large enough room with enough breakout rooms, and that also has a banquet hall where people can be fed, we've all been in conferences together. So you're familiar with the facility expectation there. There was supposed to be a phase due to the conference center. It was originally designed, that was never built. And so now, through that feasibility study, there's conversations that are happening as far as what would the plan be? Can we support that? We're in the very beginning stages of that conversation, but I want you all to be aware and we'll keep you posted as we move forward. I know that you all have received and we had some conversation that retrieved over complaints in the incorporated area related to chickens. So the conversation with FDAWU LDC was that we would find a provision for chickens with some guidelines that helped citizens be good neighbors and responsible chicken owners. So now we continue to see an uptick, and I think that we will continue to see even more as the inflation hits and people are trying to figure out a way to curb their grocery bills. And so we're going to move forward with the provision for the allowance for chickens prior to that final update to the ULDC with those setback requirements that we have discussed. So we will continue to talk through the process, but we've got several right now that are in the hopper, and we feel like that to tell people today that you can't have chickens, but in three months you can't have chickens, that's just not big government. I think that we're creating a double standard and probably misunderstanding. To Commissioner Maister Baker's good point, I don't think that that's good common sense. So we're going to move forward with chickens. Bear with us, we'll try to help people through the process, but it's just, it's part of it. And then we will be off on Monday for the Fourth of July holiday, so thank you all for that. And we do have an appreciation gift for all the employees, just a small token that will be circulated through all the departments that the department heads helped put together for every single employee on the payroll. So thank you for the opportunity for that as well. That's all, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Going back to lost... How old is that dispute?
Every 10 years.
10 years.
Yes, sir.
All right, Commissioners, any other questions for Ms. Dukes, or any comments, or... Just want to tell y'all thank you for all the hard work I put into the budget and getting that together, of course. Yeah. I agree.
I'm a great writer, isn't it?
They make it look easy.
Yes, they do.
Stephanie, I really appreciate y'all for being with the city and also...
And everybody seems to be happy, y'all. I mean, I've received no complaints, I don't know about you guys, but I've heard of you nothing but great reviews about the process this year and how smooth and seamless it feels. And just when you think you can't get it any better or do it any better, another year comes around, and we continue to hear positive things. So again, I echo what Commissioner Griner says, and I appreciate, and I appreciate each of you in the audience, but I, who came out to take part in our local government. So if there's not anything else, we will, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.